Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021 School Committee Meeting. I call this meeting to order. As always, these meetings are audio and video recorded. We'll start with introductions to my left.
Natalie Barris, student representative.
Robert Mullen.
Good evening, Mike Moran.
Good evening, Mike Branko, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Ryan McMahon.
Becky Stanton.
Julie Costucci.
Anthony Tinnorrell.
Jeff Boe.
Joe Messina, Business Administrator. Please rise for Capitol Minutes.
Applause. To the flag and the honest states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I will seek a motion to approve the February 10th, 2021 School Committee Meeting Minutes and the February 10th, 2021 Policy Subcommittee Minutes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. It carries 7-0-0. Correspondents?
None at this time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Visitors, comments, and questions? None? Share the success. Natalie?
At THS, trimester two is winding down with the exam scheduled for the week of March 8th. Twelve members of the senior class will begin student internships at TES during trimester three. This program is a part of the High School Senior Educator Internship Project through the DESI partnering with the Mass Higher Greater Lowell Workforce Board. As one of those students, I know that how grateful and excited each one of us are to be offered this opportunity. Winter sports will finish, have finished up over February break. Congratulations to all teams and senior athletes. The gymnastics team placed third overall in their conference. Fall 2 sports began this Monday, with football starting, and cheer is set to begin March 1st. Congratulations to the February Students of the Month, Sarah Al Delami, Pan Patel, Megan Murray, and Daniel Plaskas. And Student Council collected over $100 during a Valentine Food and Monetary Donation Drive. Thank you to Ms. Teal, the Student Council Advisor, for delivering the $5,000 of collected food and cash to a local food bank. At TMS, the students and teachers are eager to be back in school after break, and all of the students are well rested and ready to take on the rest of the trimester. They are also looking forward to send warmers from mother. Mr. Pollitt would also like to add that their staff is very lucky to have their maintenance and custodial staff at TMS. They appreciate all their hard work that they did over break. And at TES, they have been busy planning and preparing for their increased in-person learning. The Phase 2 learning model will include kindergarten to grade 2. We'll be transitioning back on Monday, March 1st, and grades 3 through 5 on Monday, March 15th. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I can jump in here for a second? Natalie, can you come back up to the podium, please? So Natalie's quick to share good news about everyone else in the district, so I think it's time we share a little bit good news about Natalie. It's my understanding, Ms. Barris, that you are the recipient of two full scholarship tuitions to both Salva Regina and Regis College?
Yes.
Congratulations.
That's awesome. That's awesome.
Subcommittee update. Mr. Mullen, capital asset?
Well, we'll be doing that, I guess, at a later time this evening.
Okay. Personnel. Notification of new hires. Abigail Hirsch, TES 1.0 teacher. Emily Seppa, TES 1.0 special education teacher. Carrie Jones, TES 1.0 teacher. Jenna Durkin, TES 1.0 teacher. Welcome to our new hires. Unfinished business. FY22 Capital Asset Management Plan?
It'll only take a second, but, uh... Do we have any slides ready to present, or...
It's in the drive. The backup's in the drive.
Okay. Thank you. Well, the Subcommittee for Capital Asset met this evening. Mr. Tinnorrelli and I had a discussion concerning our district needs. Mr. Messina updated us. Thanks, I'm having a real not rough night with the English language tonight. Mr. Messina updated us on the situation with the second phase of the roofing project over at the elementary school, something that we'll be bringing up at our first Capital Asset Committee Meeting tomorrow evening with the full one for the town. Discussed some more information concerning the replacement for the elevator here in this building. And Mr. Tinnorrelli and I, we voted in support of the five-year plan that you see up on the board right now. 2021 includes the phone system that was completed... Which building? Here on the side.
Elementary school, just this way.
On the elementary... Right, Phase 1 was here on this campus. And again, the Phase 2 of the roof, which hopefully will be getting started this year, right around the summertime. The three items that we have up there, I think we briefly discussed them last meeting, was the replacement of a dump truck for $55,000, the elevator repair, roughly $70,000, and the tennis court resurfacing. It's something that we want to keep on the plan because there has been a lot of community support for that project. However, we'll have to meet as a board with all the other departments to really finalize what the priorities will be for the town as a whole. So those are the three items we're going to be going in with, and also the funding for these, to continue the second phase for the roof, to finish that plan. So first off, if anyone has any questions for us, I think this would be a good time.
What, when the TES security upgrade, what would that... Is it just the cameras and the...
Yeah, that's the new digital cameras and monitors to be able to get a better picture for that campus.
Okay. Thank you.
Most welcome. Okay, then what I'd like to do is seek a motion for support from the full committee, our five-year plan, and our requests for 2022.
Rob, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries 7-0-0.
Thank you very much for your support. We appreciate that.
Give us a moment. Give us a moment. TPS reopening proposal, grades K through 12. Doc Flynn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just go through the entire School Committee update at this point, and we'll stop at one point specifically to address questions for the elementary school. Thank you, Mrs. Kavanagh, for being here tonight, but I'll do the whole proposal at this point. So we'll go to the first slide, please. Learning model drives. This is one of our foundational slides. This is not a new slide. This is something that's been on this deck since September. You know, and I think the thing I want to highlight here is it's difficult as we think about making decisions collectively, as we make recommendations to this committee. We're doing that with 1,600 students in mind. You know, I understand that parents get together, I understand that certain groups think, why are we doing this for that particular population, this particular grade level, that particular teacher? We do the best we can to make the best decision for all 1,600 students in the Tingsboro Public Schools, and it's not easy. The groups that we can't, or that look at our decisions and don't necessarily support them, it's our job to reach out to them and support them and make it as palatable as possible. And our administrators are working very hard to do that. So we'll go to the next slide. Primary goal, context and data. As we've said all along, our goal, and it's been our goal, another foundational slide since September, to return students and staff to in-person school experience as soon as possible in a safe learning environment while following guidelines grounded in science and data.
Next slide.
This is today's COVID update. You can see as of 12:22 today, we have six active cases in the district. Four at TES, two at TMS, zero at THS, and zero central office district-wide personnel. What was interesting about this slide, I compare it to where we were two weeks ago. If you go to the next slide, you can see two weeks ago at our last meeting, we had one active case in the district. So when the kids are in school, and the numbers of the community trend down, the kids are here for $7 or $8 wearing masks, we're not seeing necessarily spread that we are potentially as a result of February vacation. So just an interesting point of context there. Go to the next slide. Thank you. So, community data. We anticipate that this Thursday will also be a good week for the town of Tingsboro in terms of the DPH metric. We anticipate being in the yellow again. That came up with the COVID Staff Review Team that I participated in this week. So again, we have two weeks in the yellow. We're hoping for a third week in the yellow. We're in the right direction, and the community's doing a great job of going in the right direction. All good news, and all speaks volumes to support increased in-person learning time in the district.
Like, this is my obligatory comment. It's nine consecutive weeks of improving numbers.
Yes. Thank you. So we know that that metric, that yellow metric, as recommended by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed, for communities that are in yellow, increased or full in-person is to be considered if possible. I bring that up as a data point because that's some of the science that we're leaning on. We're leaning on the DESI guidance as well as the CDC guidance. So let's go to the next slide. As we know, I'm sure you all heard, February 12th, last Friday, the CDC came out with new reopening guidance, new recommendations, and they talked about three specific strategies that are important for school behavior. Layered mitigation strategies, you need to look at indications of community transmission, and you need to think about phase mitigation and learning modes and how that's impacting your student population. The reason I included this Twitter feed up here on the right is because this guidance came out on Friday afternoon, and by Sunday morning, it appeared that the director of the CDC was kind of walking back some of the reopening statements and saying it's an advisory. It's not mandating full in-person, it's a recommendation, it's guidance. It's guidance that applies to Wyoming, California, to Iowa, and to Tingsboro. It is a national broad-based guidance that has to be all-encompassing for every school district in the country. So, let's go to the next slide, please. As I look at that guidance, to me, it's evident that if you are in the camp that you do not want increased in-person learning, you can find something in that CDC guidance to hang your hat on. Additionally, if you are somebody who does want in-person learning, you can also find something in that CDC guidance to hang your hat on. So it's not gospel. It's not something that we absolutely have to live by. And I think if you look at the physical distancing, both sides could make an argument about that CDC recommendation. So we have DESI's recommendation, we have CDC recommendation. Let's go to the next slide, please. I think it's important that we spend a little bit of time on this crosswalk. If we know if all parties agree that layered mitigation is in fact the most important thing we can do as a public school, the strategies they're recommending are masks, distancing, hand washing, cleaning, contact tracing, community transmission. So this crosswalk right here, and this will be available on our webpage tomorrow, shows what DESI's recommending, shows what the CDC is recommending, and shows actually what's happening in the Tingsboro Public Schools. We are meeting every single one of those layered mitigation strategies. They are in full effect here in the Tingsboro Public Schools. And I would dare say that our contact tracing is better than both the CDC and DESI recommendation because we have our school nurses doing it proactively for us. So our nurses know the kids, they know the community, they know the family, doing a phenomenal job with it. So our layered mitigation strategies are in place. We'll go to the next slide. As evidenced by the fact that since September, we've had zero cases of in-school transmission when mitigation strategies have been followed. Now, we know that all kids can follow mitigation strategies, but this is a huge point. Let's go to the next slide. So let's come back to our primary goal. The foundational slide that we've talked about since August, return students and staff to an in-person school experience as soon as possible in a safe learning environment while following guidelines grounded in science and data. So let's move on to TPS reopening update. As you know, two weeks ago, this committee approved us going forward with the K1, 2 full in-person beginning March 1st, and we're getting data about grades 3, 4, and 5 for full in-person on March 15th, the beginning of our third trimester. So this is some of the data that came up from the questionnaire. We have 706 students at our elementary school. We have 99.7% response rate in parents. And I apologize, but I'm going to read these statistics so people who can't necessarily see them well at home, if they're watching this on their phone. Number of students in person, 612. 86.7% of our students will be returning in person. Number of students who will stay remote, 94, or 13.3% of our students. We had four students move from in-person to remote. We had 56 students move from remote to in-person. And to the best of our ability, we wanted to keep teaching assignments the same. As of today, at this moment, 61 students are going to have to go to a different teacher, a remote teacher, or 8.6% of the population. So 91.4% of the population are staying with their current teacher. I say "at this moment" for a reason. That speaks to K1, 2, and grade 4 all having dedicated remote teachers. Mrs. Kavanagh and I are still having conversations about having a dedicated remote teacher for grade 3 and grade 5. Those conversations are still happening. Grade 4 absolutely happened because of the number of kids that were remotely warranted a dedicated teacher. So we're having conversations about 3 and 5. So it's 8.6% tonight at 7:15. As we're concerned about transportation, that was part of the elementary school survey that went out. We were concerned that we didn't necessarily have DESI's endorsement. They had sponsored a transportation seminar, but they hadn't come out specifically and backed a new transportation guidance. Well, this email went out at 8 o'clock. At 2 o'clock that day, DESI's guidance came out. So our email with the questionnaire had transportation concerns built in it. Later that day, DESI came out and said, if we crack the windows, we're going to get 20 air changes per bus, the kids can be three feet apart. So the transportation isn't as much of an issue for us. We still encourage parents who can drive to drive. Let's, you know, not mix cohorts to the best of our abilities, just another good mitigation strategy, but it's not a deal breaker at this point. And again, that guidance came out on the 11th at 2 o'clock. So as you can see right now, based on the elementary school information, we're in a great spot. We're at 6 by 4 in the classrooms. We're at 6 by 6 where we can be, 6 by 4 in other places, and we have plans in place for transportation, and we're in a very good situation. So just go to the next slide, please. So when we left last, or two weeks ago, there were things that we needed to follow up on, and these were the concerns. And you can see just from this slide, I don't necessarily need to read all these to you, but we have our answers. And the last bullet, I do need to point to two bullets. ESF2, the ESF2 grant funding, we've talked about that. The ESF2 grant funding is coming into the town of Tingsboro, just over $200,000. This has made it possible for us to hire additional teachers to thin out some of the classes so we can redefine some spaces in the school and get the numbers down so we can accommodate it. So when the ESF2 grant funding becomes available in the next few weeks, that coupled with the transportation advisory, this is all now possible. The other thing that's possible now that we didn't necessarily know in September, we didn't know what in-school transmission was going to look like. So the three factors that we know now that we didn't know back in September have made our thinking about reopening evolve. And it's what we said, it's what this committee said since the beginning. We're going to follow context, we're going to follow data, and we're going to make informed decisions. Well, the data's changing. I do have to say that at the last meeting, too, we were tasked with working with the TTA leadership to continue to explore more in-person learning for 6 to 12, and we'll talk about that in a few minutes. But at this time, go to the next slide. Mrs. Kavanagh's here. I just, I think it makes sense to kind of pause here and focus. Any comments or questions to the elementary school before we start talking about TMS and THS? So Mrs. Kavanagh, if you don't mind coming up, that'd be great.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Any questions?
Sure. I have, thank you for joining us tonight. I appreciate your presence here. In the elementary school, I know currently they're having snack breaks in the classroom in the hybrid model. And the hybrid model allows for a 6 by 6 foot spacing. How do we plan to address that with the 6 by 4 rectangle?
So at this time, most of our classrooms can accommodate 6 by 6. When we are not able to accommodate the 6 by 6, we have set up locations throughout the building that would allow for 6 by 6 for snack break, mass breaks, and lunch.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then the Wednesdays had historically been designated as the deep cleaning day back when we kind of set the original return-to-school plan for September. And this might be more of a Dr. Flanagan question, I'm not entirely sure. How are we addressing ensuring that we have the appropriate level of cleaning if we're having students in the building five days a week?
Yeah, so I'll take this question. So yeah, so we, I think the first factor is the fact that we had zero in-school transmissions, but when our kids are in there four days a week, deep cleaning went a little bit beyond what we're doing regularly during the week. But we also have a full staff of custodians right now. We will have custodians working on Saturdays to deep clean at the end of the week or the beginning of the week, depends on how you look at that, I guess. So we are going to address it in that manner. If we find that we need to address it further, I think we will. We have no problem, you know, having custodians work overtime and things like that. But I think the bigger comment or the bigger statement to that is, I think the thinking's evolved, right? At the beginning of the year, we weren't passing old papers. Everyone thought it was a touch, high-touch area transmission. Now that we believe it's more airborne, and that's what the science is supporting, we're less concerned about the high-touch surfaces and we're more concerned about the ventilations, and that's what we are focusing on right now.
Great.
Could I just add one thing to that, Dr. Flanagan? So on Wednesdays, I think it's important to note, too, we had the two different cohorts, Lakeview and Winslow. The students were sharing desks at that time. And so at that point in time, we were making sure all of the desks and chairs were wiped down on Wednesday during that deep clean. Now they won't be sharing desks any longer.
That's a great point. Thank you. Melissa?
How will the increasing students impact drop off and pickup?
Great question. So the survey results were very helpful for us to plan and prepare for increased in-person learning. At this point in time, with the March 1 date, we don't feel we need to make any adjustments to our arrival and dismissal process. But in my notification to families last week, I did indicate that we will reassess that prior to students coming back on March 15th for grades 3, 4, and 5. I actually have a plan later this week to actually drive the arrival process so that I can firsthand see what's transpiring, if we have any backlog, knowing that we're going to have double the number of students and families dropping off. I think the other thing that we don't know right now is how many families are carpooling. So hard to say exactly what the numbers are going to look like, but we plan to roll out our existing arrival dismissal process as is and then reevaluate after the first week of K2 being in-person.
I think one of the things we'll do is we'll reach out to Chief Howe and see how the Tingsboro Police Department can help us facilitate it as smoothly as possible the first two weeks till we get our feet under us and really understand it.
Are you surprised at the new ways you're going to plan for March 1st and March 2nd?
I don't know if I would say surprised. It's been excitement. We're really happy to have the kids back in the building. We appreciate the support of School Committee. Our families have been incredibly supportive. We worked closely last week with a lot of our remote families. I think as Dr. Flanagan said at the beginning, you know, we know that there were some families that were not pleased with the potential change of a classroom teacher, and we worked closely with those families and we're working closely with the new hires to be able to build in a seamless transition for our remote learners. They are still part of the TES community, and we want them to feel that.
I think that's probably a big piece of the work that we'll do this Friday as well. Having the No Students Day on this Friday is going to be important for our staff to really have those conversations, to make sure that we're individualizing and personalizing that transition for all our kids.
Excellent. Any others? Thank you.
All right, so we will continue now. We'll go back to additional considerations. So again, I just go back to draw attention to this. At this time, sorry, two weeks ago, we were tasked with continuing to work with TTA leadership to really talk about what more in-person learning can look like in grade 6 through 12. And I want to pause here for a second. I don't know how many people saw it today, but Commissioner O'Reilly announced that he's looking for the Board of Elementary and Secondary Ed to make a modification to the student learning time requirements so that he can mandate students increase their in-person learning from grades K to 5 by April. And immediately when that came out, there was some pushback from different organizations in the state, one being specifically questions being asked to Commissioner O'Reilly at the conference. I want to say this, the working relationship we have with the Tingsboro Teachers Association is outstanding, and I want the community to know that our teachers are dedicated, our teachers are committed, and they want to work, they work with us very well to develop plans that we can all live with to get our kids back. So I want to thank the leadership of the Tingsboro Teachers Association because we don't do that. We had a meeting the other day, and I said this to a member or two here at one point, and there were four of us in the room, and we kind of looked around the room and we said, we have 80 years of experience, or 80 years of commitment to the students in the Tingsboro Public School in this meeting. I said, we're not going to turn on each other and start fighting, we work together. And I just want to thank the union for their support throughout that. They do a great job, the TTA leadership. So we'll go to the next slide, please. Yep, I did it to you again. Third time I brought this slide back. Primary goal, context and data. Return students and staff to in-person school experience as soon as possible in a safe learning environment while following guidelines grounded in science and data. Layered mitigation strategies, that's what they're encouraging. So as we think about masks, distancing, cleaning, hand sanitizing, contact tracing, community transmission, and the fact that we have zero confirmed in-school transmissions in the Tingsboro Public Schools when mitigation strategies are fully followed. Next slide. We started to explore what does full in-person learning look like at TMS and THS. So the first thing we did, option one, we looked at THS. THS, like TES, was easier to figure out. The classrooms, for the most part, are the same size. The classrooms, for the most part, have built-ins in the same area, they have heat registers in the same area, so you can get a sample of classroom at THS and kind of figure it out what your number's going to be. So Mr. Ogden, Mr. Trainor worked very hard to figure out what 6 by 4 potentially looks like, and they were able to get 18 desks per room. Now, if you think about the room right next door here, we could fit up to 23 students there. The band room has been converted into a room that can hold 24 students. We have an auditorium theater that holds two different classes, up to 25 students. So as we start to parse out the big spaces in THS, 6 by 4 is 100% possible for full-time in-person learning at THS. TMS, different story. So we had a conversation, and we began to think about our option one. What if we just thought about bringing kids back 80% in-person at TMS, four days a week? What does that look like? Mr. Pollitt and Mr. Hook went classroom by classroom with tape measures and desks and moved everything around, because the classrooms there, all different sizes, shapes, some have built-ins in one location, some have heat registers in another location, very different footprint over there, older building. So they went room by room and calculated how many desks they can get in every single room over there. And they came back and they said, 80% in-person, we can do it. So we said, okay, how do we get all the kids back 100% of the time? And one of the conversations that came up was, well, maybe we need to move our 8th grade over here to the high school. We can turn the gym into three classrooms, we can use the middle school gym, turn that into three classrooms. How do we do that? So they looked at that. They looked at big spaces between the two schools, and they said, yep, we can do that. We can get the kids back 100% of the time if we do that. So we finally tasked them with peel the label off everything. If we have to move science benches out because all the science labs are much bigger than regular classrooms, do that. So they went back, and they measured all the classrooms. And they've developed a plan to bring all TMS students back in-person, full-time at TMS without relocating any grades to THS. So at this point, I believe we are able to go 6 by 4, full in-person, five days a week for TMS and THS, pending the follow-up work we need to do with parents. Like, we need to reach out to parents, much like we did with TES, to get the numbers. We need to know what the numbers are. How many kids are going to come back? Who's going to stay remote? Have all those conversations. So go to the next slide, Mark. So I'd like to revise the proposal that I put out two weeks ago to the committee. At that time, we talked about February 26 being a No School Day. We absolutely need that. March 1st, we already know kindergarten, grade 1, grade 2 coming back five days a week. March 15th, we know grades 3, 4, and 5 coming back five days a week. We had said that on March 1st that we would start our Hybrid Plus, which was the alternating Wednesday for Lakeview and Winslow cohort. I'm going to ask that we hold that at this time. I would like the opportunity to work with the administrative team to do a little bit more fact-finding with our parents, find out what learning model parents want, and see if we can get to full in-person for grades 4, 5, and 6. We had said that on March 1 that we would start our Hybrid Plus, which was the alternating Wednesday for Lakeview and Winslow cohort. I'm going to ask that we hold that at this time. I would like the opportunity to work with the administrative team to do a little bit more fact-finding with our parents, find out what learning model parents want, and see if we can get to full-in-person for grades six through 12 beginning March 15. March 15 is an important time. March 15 for two reasons. One, it's the beginning of our third trimester. The other big reason is the last time we were fully in-person was Thursday, March 12, when our kids walked out of school at 3:00. Friday, the 13th, the governor shut down schools. The weekend happened. This would be the week that we mark one year our kids haven't been fully in-person. So it makes sense for us to come back potentially on March 15, full-in-person, once we see what the parent response could be, will be to our questionnaire. So if we go to the next slide, please. So much like we did with the elementary school, additional considerations. We need to understand what parent choice will be regarding learning model, TMS and THS. We need to recognize that as much as we try to protect all classroom teams and assignments, it may not be feasible. It's 100% doable, I believe, at the high school. They start third trimester, it's a unique schedule anyways. At the middle school, it's a different animal. So to create this and make this happen, we have a huge seventh grade. We're going to have to bring on two additional staff through our funding that we just received and change our grade seven team from a four-person, two-person team to a four-person, four-person team. To do that, there are going to be about 20 kids that may have to come from one team to another team to balance it out for seventh grade. Additionally, as we start thinking about that schedule, grade six and grade eight, their class might change, but their team may not change. Dr. Branko and I are in the same math class today. We may not be in two weeks because we have to balance the numbers across based on the learning spaces we have. So there are some things that we need to work through. We think it's possible, we think it's manageable, we think it's doable. But again, that's going to take some work between the admin team and the TTA leadership to really have those conversations and figure out what the best schedule possible is. At the end of the day, I believe this is the most impactful thing we can do because it will get all of our kids back on March 15 on a full-time basis. Remote learning will still be an option for any family who chooses it. Hybrid will not be an option. Hybrid will be out of our vocabulary. So as we, next slide, please, Mark. It's important to say this, if at any point a class, a wing, a grade, a school, the numbers start to go up, I have the right to cause, I have the authority to cause an immediate pause on that and remove them to either remote or hybrid and come back to this committee and discuss it. And then we can make a more permanent decision if we need to adjust it. So at any point, if we start to see numbers climb, we have the right to stop it, the ability to stop it right there immediately. Next slide. And this is arguably one of the most important slides. We need to work together as a community to protect our students, our staff, and our learning model. This is the guidance that our nurses put out. And we implore parents to please follow it. If your child is symptomatic, the best thing you can do is keep them home. Best thing you do is take them to get a test. We need to live and die by this. Nothing has changed on the symptom page here. I received this from Ms. Riley from TMS. But it's important, it's important that we work together because, you know, if we, it's fragile. It's fragile, this learning model. We need to do everything we can to protect it. So I just implore parents and beg parents to please follow. If your child is symptomatic, please do not send them into school because you're putting student, staff, and the entire model at risk. So we'll go to the next slide, please. So my recommendation to the committee is that we, tonight, vote to pause the Hybrid Plus model. I would ask your support in putting out a questionnaire to the middle school and high school parents tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m. Same thing we did at the elementary school. We'll give them less than 48 hours to turn around that information so that we can come together on Friday as a leadership team and verify or validate in fact that it does work. And then I would ask the school committee, I hate to do this to you, but I would ask that you call a meeting for Sunday, February 28 in the morning so that you can take a formal vote to support this or reject this. Because on March 1, the very next day, that gives us two weeks to get the physical plant on this campus ready to go. And that's not a lot of time, particularly when I talk about the middle school. Because the middle school, the configuration of some of those classes is going to change. The orientation, excuse me, is going to change. Where we have whiteboards and technology facing this way, we're going to have to move it in a lot of those classes. So we're going to need as much time as possible to do that.
Dr. Flanagan, okay, mate?
Yep, so just go to the next slide, Mark.
The bus company and Witsen Foods will be able to make those deadlines?
Yes.
With drivers, food?
Yep, so we confirmed with DeBus and Witsen's at the last meeting, from the last meeting. Mr. Messina confirmed with them. So they're aware this is coming, potentially.
Mr. Chip, could I have that question, please? Thank you very much. I understand the need to give these students, I really do. And I think it can be done in the elementary school. I'm pretty certain it could be done in this building here at the high school. I share your concerns with the middle school. I truly, and yeah, we'll go ahead and we'll have this big discussion on the 28th. But I really think we should consider one factor that if we give the middle school a little bit more of a delay, we're getting into better weather and able to open up all the windows in that building and do what we know is the most important thing, is that air replacement, to keep that as healthy as possible. Knowing those classrooms over there, that's a huge challenge. And you just brought up another thing, you know, with the technology having to be replaced, the reconfiguration of those rooms. Why not buy yourself a little bit more time in that building instead of pushing for March 15? Shoot for April 1 or that first week of April, that first full week of April. You know, I appreciate the symbolism of the March 15 return date being one year. I just don't want to see a rush just because of that.
Yeah, so-
I know it's also the beginning of the next-
Fair point, fair point. And I think, you know, one of the things that we're going to talk about tomorrow, so a couple of points. One of the things we're going to talk about tomorrow at our leadership meeting is, you know, we're not reopening for the sake of reopening. We're going to do it well. And we're going to make sure that we transition our kids well. Make sure that we take care of them socially, emotionally. And I think that's one of the biggest things, is the social, emotional needs these kids get back sooner than later. In terms of ventilation, we spent a good amount of money at the beginning of this year from CARES Act grant money purchasing HEPA air filters. And I will tell you right now that every sixth-grade classroom at the TMS right now has at least two. And those alone produce four air changes per hour. So you're looking at eight air changes per hour. The recommendation's four to six. So just by cracking the window an inch, we could be up 10 to 12 air changes per hour in those rooms. I don't disagree with you. I think, you know, in conversation with Mr. Pollitt and Mr. Piper, you know, I don't mean to make it sound overwhelming, moving technology. We can do that. We can get that done. Our crew is great. Our facilities guys are phenomenal. Our tech crew is great. We can get it done.
I would just like to chat and say, I don't think anything is being rushed. At no point have we rushed anything. We've been looking at this since COVID started. We meet weekly to talk about the numbers. We have nine consecutive weeks of unproven numbers. This isn't just a, a lot of things look good, let's go back to school. This has been building for a while, so.
Well then, excuse me if I made it sound like we were rushing. That was not my intent. If I could say that, I don't, getting older and not remembering everything I was saying.
It was both of people, too, just other people.
So my intent to this is just to make sure that you have enough time and your staff, your ministry, has enough time to get these changes in place.
Absolutely appreciate it.
That's a lot of work. And, you know, I know, everybody is working to get things done correctly. That's always the first and foremost thing. It's always been in your mind ever since I started here. I just, again, I just want to make sure you're not pushing it too much.
Appreciate it.
In the technology side, didn't I? All right.
I have a quick question. How does the remote work at this grade six through 12? Is there designated teachers for the remote?
No, it's a great question, thank you. So no, that'll still be concurrent learning. So the teacher will still teach kids in front of them and remote students at home, yes. Because if you think about it, you know, like, take a seventh-grade team. We would have to hire a dedicated remote teacher for English, math, science, social studies, Spanish. So it became cost-effective at that point. But in terms of the elementary school, you know, we potentially can do it where it's, the teachers teach multiple content areas. And in the same breath, if a student at the elementary school needs to quarantine or needs to isolate, they will still be in their regular classroom with concurrent learning. So concurrent isn't just going away completely. There may be students who have to come in and out of the class based on CDC recommendations.
So to Rob's point, are you comfortable that you can achieve all these changes prior to March 15?
Yes.
If everyone's done with questions, Mr. Chair, I will make a motion to pause the current.
Every question?
Hybrid Plus model. And ask to schedule a meeting for Sunday, the 28th.
I'll make, I'll second that motion.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I carry 700.
So Mr. Chair, on Sunday, February 28, much like Mr. Kavanagh was here, I'll have Mr. Ogden, Mr. Pollitt come and answer any specific questions any committee members may have.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Dr. Flanagan, can we make sure that's televised?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. No more slides.
No more slides?
We're back on the regular agenda.
Sorry. I was just waiting for a cue.
All right, moving on. New business. The following policies will be submitted as second read. 2.2, tobacco products on school premises prohibited. 4.1, cancellation, delay, opening, unscheduled early release. 4.3, student records. 5.1, student dress. 5.4, alcohol, tobacco, and drug use by students prohibited. 5.7, international exchange students. 5.12, student absences and excuses. 5.15, student conduct and discipline. Seek a motion to approve those policies as a secondary?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I carry 700. Finance. Mr. Messina?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For signing of bills, there were 15 bill warrants presented to the committee tonight. All were back meet approved. In your drive is a list of warrant numbers, account, and amounts. No signing of payroll tonight. We'll do it at a future meeting. And in your drive are the three reports that make up the January 21 financial package. That is your school committee budget at the end of January, your school revolving account balances at the end of January, as well as the student accounts at the end of January. And I will leave the very first enrollment to the chair.
Thank you. At TES, we have 749 students. TMS has 394. THS has 445. 23 out-of-district students for a total of 1,611 students. Do you have any further? Thank you, Mr. Messina.
School committee discussion. Natalie?
I'm all set, also, thank you very much.
I'm all set, thank you.
I'm good, thank you. Yep?
I'm all set, thank you.
All set, thank you.
I'd like to thank Ms. Kavanagh for coming out this evening and all the work that her and her group, her staff have done to get ready for our upcoming week, for our students to return in full-in-person. So thank you to you and your staff. And thank you to Dr. Flanagan and Dr. Branko and your staffs for hopefully getting us to where we need to be and getting our kids back in school. So thank you to everybody at the TTA also for all the work that they've done. And I look forward to hopefully our students being back full-time. So thank you.
I'll second all of that. I know it's an incredible amount of work getting to this next phase. And I thank everybody for all the work that it's been on.
I'd like to congratulate Natalie again on your college news and then also for your internship at the elementary school. That's fantastic. What a great representation you make for our community. So congratulations for that. And, you know, thank you to Dr. Flanagan's team, Mr. Pollitt, Mr. Ogden for working so hard to get us so close and just about there for the middle school and high school. It's been a long time coming and we look forward to hearing a little bit more about it on Sunday and voting.
So thanks for giving up your Sunday morning. Appreciate it. No, we're excited, really excited for third trimester, really excited if we can get kids back. Really looking forward to that. You know, I had the feeling at the start of the new year today, as I drove by the practice field, the football team was out there on February 23rd. Didn't make any sense, but it was still good to see. So it's great. I think it's great for kids. I think, you know, the more normalcy we can provide, the better off they're going to be. So thanks for your support with that.
Congratulations, Natalie. Javlo gone.
I like that. Thank you.
TTA, Dr. Flanagan, the principals, a lot of work goes into this.
I know after our last meeting, I talked to some families and the kids who were in elementary school actually cheered that they were going back full-time. And the older students in TMS and THS were sad that they weren't. So the kids want to be back as bad as we want them back. So I think if we can get them there, you know, that should be great for everybody involved.
So looking forward to meeting Sunday and hopefully we probably have some good news. And the kids will be back. We do not have any executive session tonight, so I will see the motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I carry 700. I'll adjourn. Have a good night, everybody.